Board of Education meeting will be livestreamed and viewing information can be found on our district website. The meeting is now called to order. It is March 20th, 2024. The time is 6:31 PM. Our mission is to provide a safe and caring climate and culture in which we engage, inspire, educate, prepare, and empower all learners in partnership with their surrounding community to be successful in today's and tomorrow's society. Les, can you please lead us in the pledge allegiance? Sorry, I was just telling, I was just telling Al that about the pledge allegiance, I said, and then I'll say, Les, can you lead us in the pledge allegiance?
I'll do my best impersonation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
What do you call that in movies when you do a pre-something?
Prequel?
Yeah. Okay, too funny. Zach, then you can, you please lead us or give the roll call, please.
The following board members are present at the District Administration Office. Scott Andresson.
Yes.
Natalie Copeland.
Here.
Al Dolgren.
Here.
Zach Dorholtz is here. Shannon Haas.
Here.
And Monica Seggera-Swartz.
Here.
Heather Weems is currently not present. The following cabinet members and staff are present at the District Administration Office. Superintendent Dr. Lori Putnam, Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Education, Assistant Superintendent of PK-5 Education Nikki Hansen, Assistant Superintendent of E-12 Education Services Dr. Mike Gravard, Executive Director of Community Education Adam Holm, Executive Director of Finance and Business Services Amy Scalerud, Executive Director of Human Resources and Labor Relations Tracy Flynn Bowe, Executive Director of Operations Gary Ganji, Executive Director of Research Enrollment and Assessments Donna Roper, Director of Community Engagement Communications Tammy Deland, Media Technicians Paul Novak and Gordy Scott, and Custodian on Site is Evan Voss.
Thank you. Then I need a motion to approve tonight's Board of Education meeting agenda.
So move.
And do I have a second?
Second.
A motion by Scott, a second by Natalie. Zach, can you call roll?
Monica Seggera-Swartz. Shannon Haas.
Yes.
Zach Dorholtz, yes. Al Dolgren?
Yes.
Natalie Copeland?
Yes.
Scott Andresson?
Yes.
Thank you. Then we have the consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of non-controversial items that the Board adopts routinely without debate. Any single member may remove an item from the consent agenda by requesting removal at the time the consent agenda is moved for adoption. On tonight's consent agenda, Item A, approval of minutes from February 7th, 2024 and February 21st, 2024. Item B, approval of bills and other financial transactions in the grand total amount of Item C, approval of personnel staff changes. Item D, acceptance of grant awards and donations. Item E, bid award Apollo parking lot replacement. And Item F, Apollo LTFM improvements change order totaling $178,865. At this time, does any Board member wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Okay, looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
So move.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Again, a motion by Scott, a second by Natalie. Zach, can you call vote?
Shannon Haas.
Yes.
Zach Dorholtz, yes. Al Dolgren?
Yes.
Natalie Copeland?
Yes.
Scott Andresson?
Yes.
Monica Seggera-Swartz?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to information items. First up, we have the Lincoln and Talahe school presentations presented tonight by Lincoln Principal Heather Ebner and Talahe Principal Sam Court. And maybe some guests over there to cheer you on. Welcome.
Thank you, thank you Chair Haas, Dr. Putnam, members of the Board.
You guys hit the, they're muted, you guys just hit them.
Thank you. I practiced that part and I'm not going to do it right again. So thanks for having us tonight. We're so excited to be here. As part of the video that you'll get a chance to see later, we have some students that were highlighted in it and we had students, part of our Young Scholar students at Talahe who presented at the MLK Community Celebration and they were recognized for some of their writing and their work. And a few of them were unable to make it to the video because they were ill. So we thought, what a great chance to have them come here tonight to showcase their writing.
Go ahead, Mary. Smile. Introduce yourself.
Good evening. My name is Mary. I'm reading the perfect poem. Do what's right, realize kindness and fighting. And fighting. Always be kind. My life is important.
All right. So we are going to get started. Talahe and Lincoln, two schools, one community. And we are going to start with our first focus area, which is positive climate and culture.
Yeah. Before we start, we just want to make sure we're recognizing our leadership teams, the staff at both buildings, students and families that make this work every day. It was, all the, all the work started over the summer as we met with our leadership teams and we're constantly kind of monitoring the progress of these goals and really appreciate and couldn't do it without the support of our amazing teachers and staff. Positive climate and culture at Talahe, we've tried to focus on integrating social emotional learning and supports.
And at Lincoln, we are working on improving culture by using the input from our staff at Lincoln.
And what that looks like at each school is a little bit different. We'll dive in after each focus area into kind of some specifics. So at Talahe, we chose to focus on a lot of conscious discipline. We have toolkits and that's social emotional supports, SEL, what we'll end up shortening it to later you'll hear. And we've got a calendar of these lessons too that we push out to teachers. So they're all teaching the same SEL lessons throughout the week to support students in mindfulness and being respectful, responsible, safe, our core values at Talahe.
And we focused more on the staff side for this one because we got some feedback last year about feedback loops and closing them and making sure that everybody had all of the information that they needed in order to feel like they were connected and part of the school community. And so one thing that we did was we created a Google form that we use at our staff meetings to gather input from staff on how they're feeling and what things are going well. We talk about mountaintop views and valley views and where they're at and then how we can support them if they are in a valley, how can we get them back up to that mountaintop view. We also, we've seen some kind of improvements based on what we've implemented and we can't say for sure that this is why, but one of the things that we have noticed is that our fill rates and absenteeism is down at Lincoln and we are the highest in the district at 96% fill rate for our subs. So we're pretty proud of that and excited that we are filling those spots. And turnover. So as you know, sometimes in certain schools, we've had a turnover of staff and we only had one new classroom, new to district classroom teacher this last fall. And hopefully, all things go well, we will be at zero for next year. We'll have all returning staff. So that's very exciting for us.
Just a quick visual of where the fill rates were at and so.
Oh yeah. You can kind of see, Talahe is pretty high too.
Well, as well. We're following along.
Yep, absolutely.
Focus area two is instruction that improves outcomes. And so at Talahe, we really, in the classrooms and the whole school, wanted to focus on those foundational skills in reading and in math. And it goes along, well, you'll see next, with all the, all the work and time we've put into training and structured literacy and letters. And so our goal was to have 90% of our scholars be demonstrating mastery of those foundational reading skills. And we're, you know, we set a real advantageous, a real optimistic goal, but we're really excited by the growth that we've seen with students across the years so far.
And for Lincoln, slightly different. We have both a reading and a math goal. We wanted to focus on growth and moving kids through the different categories that we see. So if you will look, we are hoping for 25% of our students in each of the categories, low, some and high, to move up a category. And we are, we're getting there. It's, our winter benchmarking data looked really good. So we're excited about that. And then our math goal is for 50% of our students to reach their stretch growth goal. Stretch growth is defined as an ambitious yet attainable goal based on previous student performance in the iReady platform. And the iReady platform is our new math platform.
Oh, that's mine. Sorry, I missed that one.
A little bit of what that looks like at Talahe for the instruction that can produce positive outcomes. Again, we talked a lot about letters training and you've done a ton of work and we've been seeing some incredible conversations and growth from teachers. We had a training this afternoon and it was funny, we just kind of laughed the whole time too, but we learned as well. So our kindergarten team was just, they were on fire this afternoon. We also implemented a new assessment for screening for reading. And so three times a year, we'll check those foundational skills in reading in fall, winter, and spring to be able to make sure we're making that growth. And so we use a program called FastBridge this year. So that's been a learning curve for teachers, but they've taken it on and really done a nice job with some supports. And then along with that, just the pilot of our Somali dual language classroom in kindergarten as well has been a really fun just experience to go in and see that classroom for half of the day with students speaking in Somali and the other half for them being able to speak and learn in English. So kind of the whole picture of how do we wrap around students with their social identity, their SEL, their math, and their reading.
And ours is very similar. We are also doing letters, as is all of elementary, and we're starting to get into some really fascinating and interesting components of it, I think. I get really excited about it and the teachers are too. I've never seen this hive engagement of our staff in a PD. They are bought in and they love it and they can see the difference that it's making for our kids. So that's super exciting. We also piloted fluency flight in our iReady math program for the district and are seeing great results. That's a basic math fact program and that has been going super well. Our kids are doing very, very well at learning their basic math facts and that program really is just wonderful. They love it. There's little dragons in it, of course, and they get to win those dragons if they do well. So they're all talking about it. So that's great. We also are looking at our data. We're doing teacher talks. We are doing data dives. We are using FastBridge and iReady diagnostic to make sure that we are looking at each individual student at Lincoln and how we, how we can best meet their needs academically and socially and emotionally. We have SEL building wide. We have an SEL coach at Lincoln. She gets into every classroom every week and teaches lessons based on conscious discipline. And we also have, oh, what else are we doing? Essentials in both fourth and fifth grade. That's Sande. And that has been wonderful. And then last but not least, we are doing learning lunches, lunches with the principals. On Fridays, we take the students from each classroom who have the most Flexia units earned and the most lessons completed in iReady and they get a certificate and they get to have lunch with a special dessert with Assistant Principal Amanda Anderson and myself. And it's been really fun to acknowledge those kids and to celebrate the great learning that they're doing each week.
Focus area three is innovation. And for us, it was to just respond to any challenges that we're seeing through some development of authentic solutions and in partnership with our stakeholders.
And we said that we were going to strategically allocate resources to support the programs and initiatives that best meet the needs of District 742 learners. We did that because Modern Classroom was an initiative that came about last spring and about probably 90% of my classroom teachers were wanting to get on board and get trained. And so they did that all summer long and so we wanted to make sure that we were supporting that and making sure that they had access to what they needed. So, and we were able to do that.
Yeah, another, a few other innovative approaches we saw to take, to tackle some of the areas for growth and challenges we were experiencing was implementing some additional attendance supports, you know, just kind of school-wide as finding time in the day that was, that was already there for teachers to connect with families. And then also a structure for them to, to refer families onto our tier-two, tier-two attendance team. That's a lot of Ts. Where that group really gets to dive down into the heart of what the attendance concern is and seek ways that we can help remove those barriers for families if they're experiencing ways or things that are keeping those students from being at school. We also had some new family engagement events that we haven't been able to do before. We love our fall and spring picnics and those are incredible blasts and you need to make sure you get to those. But we also partnered with Promised Neighborhood to screen the Right to Read film and that developed into some conversations of having some of their staff come, watch our intervention staff do reading instruction and then for hopefully some future partnerships, we've got some other ideas on how we can partner in the summer and then moving forward.
So we, as I said, we're really focused on Modern Classroom for innovation. You may have heard it called blended learning. So I wanted to give you just a little overview of what Modern Classroom is because it might be a new term. Modern Classroom is where educators forgo the traditional front-of-the-class lecture to provide shorter forms of direct instruction. Students can access whenever and where it might be. So in this way, educators duplicate themselves digitally. So they record themselves, they record their lesson and they put it on CSO and then students can watch that lesson. They can pause it, they can rewind, they can play it again, they can do it, they can do it at different times depending on if they have pull-out services for any reason, they can access that content in different ways. So it also helps the teacher kind of free them up so that they can walk around the classroom and help individual students more of a one-on-one situation. They don't move on to the next lesson until they master or do the exit slip for the current lesson that they're on. So it's very self-paced as well with, of course, lots of teacher interaction and lots of monitoring and adjusting as needed. So they move on when they mastered the concept and are ready to build on that skill. So that is what we are working on. And like I said, we have about 90% of our classroom teachers trained and we have a PD coming up on April 3rd where we're going to try to get the rest of our classroom teachers at least, and maybe some special ed teachers too, to embark on that training this summer. We also have some, all of the teachers that were trained last summer have mentors that they're working with from Modern Classroom. So they come to our site, they do walkthroughs and they help support those teachers in implementing Modern Classroom.
Focus area four is career and post-secondary education options. And yes, at our 4-5 and even at our pre-K3 schools, we talk about jobs and futures and where students will go after school. And so one of the just kind of easy steps or connections we found at Talahe was the conscious discipline classroom jobs. So every student has a job, whether it be just the door holder, the attendance taker, the teacher's helper, trying to help build that belonging within the classroom.
And we did not highlight an area on this one specifically, but two things that we do at Lincoln to support this component is our career fair and our Lincoln student jobs, which you'll hear more about in a minute.
Yeah, we highlighted them.
Okay, all right. So just as you are going to see our video in just a little bit, I just want to highlight that we have, the student jobs at Lincoln will be kind of in the video, but I want you to know they do apply for their jobs because I don't think that's covered in there. They do actually, we just had a student who started his trimester three job and he felt that it wasn't going that, that well. And so he was going to quit and we had an exit interview and he decided he's going to give it another try. So we're very glad that he reconsidered resigning from his position. So, yes. All right.
Finally, focus area five is that family and community engagement. At Talahe, we chose to create some school-based connections that bring together families, educators, and the community.
Yeah, and for us, we want to create systems and procedures to provide access and opportunities for all of our students and families.
Some of the highlights already were shared kind of through innovation and other pieces, but we have third grade students who come in and they do announcements with me and you'll hear about student announcements at Lincoln. We also had partnerships with Promised Neighborhood and Too Much Talent where our grade-level academic leads work with contacts from those two incredible organizations to provide guided reading and math worksheets or lessons based off of what students are doing in their, in their iReady and on their math path for math activities. So we're trying to do our best job to align what's happening at those outside of school tutoring areas to align that with what's going on in the classroom. And that's been a really great partnership and they just asked for more folders yesterday when they were picking up the Too Much Talent kits, so.
All right. And for Lincoln, this is kind of our list, very similar to Talahe as well. Spring picnic, fall festival, definitely check those out. They are very well-attended events. It's very fun. We also have student ambassadors, student council, I didn't put that on there, Promised Neighborhood, of course, county connections, working with the various counties for attendance and for support of our students. Classroom events that we scheduled this year, this will be the first year that we've done this since I've been at Lincoln, we are having all classrooms inviting families for an event during the school year. So those will mostly occur after our MCA testing is done, just because, you know, that gets a little crazy to try to schedule. So they will occur in the spring now. So some teachers are doing some puppets and some are doing poetry and some are doing readers theater, but we are inviting every family to Lincoln for those events. We also are pairing with Community Angels, which is a community organization that provides new clothing to people in need. And we get to do the referral from our building. So we reach out to families and ask if we notice that there might be a need, we reach out to the family and then we can refer. So we've done a couple already and we just got started. So we're excited about that opportunity and that connection with our community. Oh, I did say it here. Okay, student jobs. We, you'll see it in the video, but that's our big one really. And 100% of our families also were contacted for conferences every time, every fall and spring. So we do things a little bit differently because some of our families struggle with transportation and we try our best to get families to come in. But when that doesn't work, we offer a phone or a Google Meet option just to make sure that we're making contact. If a family doesn't respond to that, we do an email or I send a text message from our school cellphone. So 100% of our families were contacted with information about their child during both fall and winter conferences. So we're also very proud of that because even if the parent isn't able to come, we're still reaching out and making that connection. One thing I wanted to share, and I know you got a data slide, a data deck from Donna as well, but we think we're really proud of this and we think that it has a lot to do with our family and community engagement. But this is our attendance data so far and you can see the difference from last year to this year. I am excited to see where that will continue to grow. Attendance has been a huge issue for our kiddos and so we're just really excited that it is improving and that we're, we look like we're on a really good trajectory for this year. So very excited about that. All right, here's our video. Anything else you want to add? Okay, all right. I'm going to see if I can click here. Sorry.
People holding hands, I smell food to share. I enjoy singing, I taste many ethnic foods, and I feel as one with all. I'm going to be reading a Quentin poem. I study it is by helping, speaking, loving, be kind. Imagine a school with strong foundational reading skills for all. FastBridge is one of the assessments that we use to see where the kids are. It's nice to see that it tells you, hey, this is where your kid is at, this is where they're supposed to be. Well, so far, I've actually started implementing some of these ideas. My small groups have improved a lot. It makes it easier for me to go back to the basics and I think that's really important with the kids that struggle and when they're like, oh, this is actually something that I'm capable of doing, like I understand it, they get more confidence, I just see huge change in them. And then the next week, they're at the next level. I imagine a world where students are confident in their reading skills to the point where they can actively imagine themselves making progress. I want my kids to have that confidence and if they believe that they can do better, they will do better. Imagine having students be able to feel comfortable with their reading level. It would make me feel pride for them and excited about what's next in their education and in their academic career. One of the nice things about Talahe is that we have a nice big intervention and assist team. We are able to really be able to service as many students as we possibly can. You build a different relationship. You're able to have those students feel confident and comfortable with whatever reading level they are at. That skill level can be built upon in a deeper and more enriched way than it might be able to be in a classroom where they are amidst all their peers. I have a second grade student who came into the school year really apprehensive about even just using her voice and being heard. And once we figured out what some of those needs were that she had and were able to address those in our small group setting, she's felt a new level of comfort with being able to share her reading and being able to read in front of others. Imagine we have third graders all feeling confident about what they can read and the level that they are at when they leave our school to head over to Lincoln for fourth grade. Good morning, Lincoln All-Stars. This is Ms. Edna and I'm here with you this morning. I'm so glad you are here today and part of our Lincoln family. I am announcement anchor. My job is to do announcements and I am pretty thankful for this job though. My favorite part is I get to tell everyone the daily news with Ms. Edna and Ms. Anderson. I was born and ready for this thing.
Imagine a school filled with student voice. Student jobs really started when we noticed opportunities on how to get our students to feel connected in a building and with our staff. And so we thought, well, why don't we put those two things together? Let's start with student jobs. It kind of evolved from there. We had identified different areas in the school that would be good for our students to apply for. Kids are coming to us saying, oh, I think we should have this job or let's start that one. So we're just continuously getting ideas on how students are wanting to do more for their school and their community. Students are wanting to have that clock-in, clock-out process to their student job, the possibility of imagining themselves for college and career. Student jobs have been amazing. That was a big thing that we were able to really pull into our classroom lessons, that in order to have a job, you have to be respectful and responsible and be kind and they are so proud to wear their little badges. Sayida is a perfect example of it. She was very shy. Having this job has just, she just beams when she's doing it. She just lights up. She's so proud of herself and Fabian too.
I'm a barista. I make coffee for Ms. Edna and Ms. Anderson. And the best thing is when I get older, I can be a barista because I had more experience.
I am lucky enough to get the barista job. I can do like a real job now.
And so that really has empowered the students as well. I imagine that this program is going to continue and blossom because we are seeing students that are requesting specific jobs.
One of my students who I work with during the school job is Symphony. On Wednesdays, that's the day that she is in charge of being the school gardener. She just knows exactly what to do, what classrooms to go and what plants to water, how much water. It's awesome to see her kind of being so independent.
My job at Lincoln is to go around the school and water school plants. And Ms. Edna's office, the plant is looking sad, so I get water. It just makes me so proud every time I water plants.
I think it's so important because getting this incentive to come to school. Like for some kids, it can be really, really hard to have that drive and I feel like it gives kids purpose. There's been so many times where I've heard Symphony say, oh my gosh, I have my school job tomorrow. And, or she'll come to school in the morning on Wednesday and be like, I have no job today. And it's just so exciting for her to feel like she has a purpose. She knows she gets to do it today and she's just looking forward to it so much. And I feel like it also gives every kid who has a job, a place in the school to see how much they can have a positive impact. It's beautiful.
Building services. As building services, we have to make sure the building is clean, we make sure the bathrooms are clean. We kind of like check for lost items.
We have to push open the door to make it like stay. And then if we just see any like ball or anything, we pick it up and put it back in the basket.
I like just being able to help out our school.
A connection that was built between school staff that isn't necessarily their classroom teacher and it's their school. It's all of our school. Imagine that. Imagine that.
Imagine that. Imagine that. Imagine that.
I said I wasn't going to cry and I didn't. I've watched it a couple of times trying to get myself to keep it together. All right. That is all we have for you. Yeah, anybody have any questions or comments? Natalie? And then Monica?
Nope, I didn't cry either. I didn't even want to. Yeah, yeah, right. Their little hearts, you know, and the thing that I noticed, nope, still not going to cry. And the thing that I noticed, nope, still not gonna cry. The thing that I noticed is that sense of belonging that, you know, for the reality of some of our kids at these schools, you know, living at or below the poverty line, that can be really difficult to have that sense of belonging and to feel, like you said, going to, or like someone in the video said, going to school isn't always, you're not super excited maybe because you know you struggle a bit in some areas. And so the supports you've talked about putting in place. You know, when I was an educator and getting my degree, it wasn't ever like, now let's have the class where you ensure that the kids are coming to school. You know, so the reality of just making sure our kids are there, that slide was epic. Just in the past three years to see that turnaround, it's very, it's life-changing for these kids. So thank you for that. I would like to talk about a couple things on your data deck. The first thing that really stood out for me was your science scores in fifth grade. Oh, so proud of y'all. So tell me a little bit about, that's really changed too, just as much as your attendance. So tell me a little bit about how you're outperforming the state on the MCA Science Assessment.
So I have a fantastic fifth grade team. And I also think that we have dedicated time to science, more so than we ever have in the past. For a while, you know, we kind of were like, oh, we're gonna integrate it, we're gonna integrate it. And now we are dedicating time. So our instructional minutes have science embedded. We also have, at Lincoln, we just have some really passionate teachers who love science and make it a priority. And I think that's key, right? Like they love teaching science and they are motivated to teach it and they want our kids to have that vocabulary. And our ML teachers are also supporting our ML learners with their pre-teaching the vocabulary to them. I was just in a lesson today where the ML teacher was pre-teaching the science vocab. I mean, how powerful is that? So that when those kiddos get in there, they know already what that language is gonna be. So I think that's a combination, right? It's not just one thing, it's a lot of different things. But amazing teachers, of course.
Wonderful. The other thing I wanted to say is I got to see your fifth graders perform in with, I can't remember his name, the guy who came in and did the drum.
Brother.
Brother, yes, brother. It's gonna come to us at 3:00 AM. But you know, the reality of like a fifth grader's doing a solo, being a former music educator, wow. With parents there, with other staff coming in and the confidence builder. And to know that it, you know, wasn't the same kid every time or your most likely kid to do a solo. But kids that may have never seen themselves doing that, to do that and see that confidence was great. And then I got to participate a little bit as well and they were totally better than I was. I'm like, I have a degree in this and you're better than me.
They practiced all week, though.
Yeah, okay. But what I noticed too was in the hallways and in your music classroom, how students are so excited to see teachers. And they're like, hi, hi, hi. You know, like it's just an uplifting environment. Sorry, I'll have to come to you next time. I'm just like all about Heather right now. But I really, when I left there after attending that, I just like had the best day because I'm like, that's us and that's really beautiful. So thank you for your work.
Thank you for coming. It was wonderful to have you there. Thank you.
Thank you so much. That was really nice and beautiful. Did you tell us how did you come up with the jobs program with that idea?
Yeah, so we were just really thinking about attendance, actually, and what we could do to intervene because there's not a lot of attendance interventions. You know, you get alarm clocks for kids, you call parents, you send letters, right? And that wasn't effective at Lincoln. It wasn't making the impact that we wanted it to make. And as you know, we can't teach them if they're not there. And so we started to think about what could we do to motivate kids to come? And I'm like, what about, I don't know, it just kind of popped in my head, I guess. I don't even know where, if I saw it somewhere or what it was. But I'm like, what if we tried this? Like it can't hurt, right? We can see if it works. And so we started last spring and we just saw like kids like super excited about it. And they were like telling us like, oh, you gotta add this job and can we start right away next year? Like they were really amped about doing the jobs. And so this year, we started right away in Try One. And it's interesting to me because as we've gone, like we had 130 applicants this last trimester. 130 of our kids applied for a job. And they have to do a Google form, like it's, and they have to answer questions about why they would be good for the job and what, and they pick like their top three choices. And so it was just kind of, it was really out of a need for, in MTSS, like an intervention for kids who were not coming to school. And it's kind of blossomed. I mean, and it isn't just kids who struggle with attendance anymore. We try to get kids who need a connection or kids who are struggling connecting with their classroom teacher, maybe. Because you know, we can't, not one, one teacher can't, you know, be everything to every kid. So as you saw in the video, our custodian, Mark, he mentors those building services kiddos and he is, it is the favorite part of his day, right? Because most people that are working in schools, that's why they're there. They love to be with the kids. And some of our support staff don't always get that opportunity. So it's good for staff and it's really good for kids. And boy, we also expanded the barista program. So they used to just make coffee for Ms. Anderson and I. They're now making coffee for, staff buy a punch card, they punch their card, they deliver their coffee. And they get to decide, you know, they can pick their creamers and the kids are, we have a refrigerator, we have a station. It's high-tech. We're gonna contact Starbucks next to see if we can get a grant. But we got big dreams, big dreams at Lincoln. So yeah, so that's kind of where it came from.
Great. So you're gonna get better coffee, too.
Better coffee.
All right. So tell me a little bit more about the attendance support. And so you said that you contact every single family. Tell us a little bit more about, again, how it seems like something came out of the, out of the need for kids to not miss a school. So yeah, tell me more about how are you planning, looking at evaluating that part of the program?
So I think we're using our attendance data to see if it's making a difference. But we also track individual students and I'm sure Talahi, you're doing the same. So we have, we have an attendance meeting once a week where a team of our mental health advocate and our assistant principal and our counselor get together and we look, they look at who our top students are, who are missing school. And then we look at what interventions we're putting in place. And I'm sure you probably do the same.
Similar to, and what we've done here in Try Three, we've actually implemented, we found some time within the day where every Monday, our office staff provides a two-week snapshot for the whole class to the classroom teachers so they can see if there are any unexcused absences or tardies. And then we've got a script written by AI and adjusted by our leadership team that we have to help teachers be able to call home and just show that care and show that support and that noticing that, you know, we noticed that your student wasn't here. Is there anything, you know, we can do? And reaching out, not in a blame way, but in a support way. And if they're able to get through, then that family gives us a little information if there's a way to help. But if they don't, that teacher fills out a form that goes to our tier-two attendance team. And that's our counselors, our assistant principal, myself, and then our family advocate from the Equity Department. And that group then dives down a little bit deeper to look at root causes. Are we talking at a belonging concern? Are we looking at a transportation concern? Are we looking at connections too? You know, how do we attack those? Because you have to identify that root cause to be able to put in some sort of support to help the family and to help solve the problem and get the kid there. Especially at our ages, right? There, it's nothing the kid's doing. It's something's getting in the way of the family being able to get the child there consistently and there for us to be able to be with the kid all day long. So it's just a way of finding out what that thing is and how can we, how can we help the family and team and partner together?
Great. So one question that I have always, but I haven't ever asked, so sorry that you're gonna be the first ones that I get to ask this. But that sounds like a lot of work. Yes. And it sounds like you have a lot of families that may have the same issues. So that, for me, that sounds like this is new work for you compared to all the things that you had to do before. So that's my question. How do you balance this new work with whatever else you had to do before? That was nothing.
We kind of, I think we see it just as the work instead of more work or other work. You know, when you talk family and belonging and the social-emotional learning, the way I've been, it's been described to me as it's not just one more thing on the plate for educators, it's the plate. We have to have them here, we have to have them with us, we have to have the kids in a state of mind to be ready to learn. And all of that can't happen unless we partner with families and with community organizations to get them in our schools. And so seeing that, it's really easy for our staff to step up and they've wanted to help out. My teachers don't mind making a phone call home because they know it shows that that family, that they care and that they noticed that that child wasn't there that day. And for some families, that's all it's needed, is just, oh, my gosh. We had a teacher the other day say, family told me they, they're a new family, they just came in, they're two weeks, and the child missed the other day and the family just forgot to call. But we called and the teacher called, not just the robo-call from the office, but the teacher called and the family told the teacher and said, oh, my gosh, I've never had the teacher just call if my child wasn't there. Like, oh, my goodness. So we want to send that first message. And we know our classroom teachers and the staff that are closest to the kids and families are the best ones to do that. But then if it does require some more digging and some more work, we've got an incredible Equity Department, our family advocates are phenomenal resource for our schools. And then our APs and our principals and our counselors, they're ready for it. And they've got the adjustable schedules. They're all full, but they're adjustable to be able to try to figure out, is it a home visit that we need to do for this family? Is it more phone calls? Is it texting from the school cellphone? Just because that's a better way to connect with families than a phone call, so.
So I appreciate the way that you started answering the question and telling us about that. This is just the work that sounds like, like, I mean, yeah, I agree with that. That's the job. And I appreciate that you look at that that way. You did start, what I was going for also is what you kind of said at the end. So kind of wanted to rephrase the question in, to maybe contextualize a little bit more. So as a board member, what I am looking for for you is how we support the administration in supporting you. And one of those things is allocation of resources. So if you tell me that you can do everything, then you get what you get. And this is the job for you. This is the job for you, so this is it.
Very happy to be here.
All that. That's why I thought that I need to qualify this in another way.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I hear where you're going to. And I think it also works into some of the Minnesota MTSS work that the district's moving forward with, so multi-tiered systems of support. So MTSS, we, or used to be, this program called RTI, Response to Intervention, and it did a really, really good job of looking at reading and math and just reading and math. And what MTSS has done is it's expanded those supports, you know, and to look at reading, math, social-emotional learning and the whole child and how can we do that? So I think the first step we do as administrators and as a system is try to figure out where our, where our needs are and then we allocate resources to those. So our family advocates are incredible resource. And we had a new family advocate, Maria, started Talahi. And as we developed her schedule, we noticed, you know, there is time for her to be able to connect with families and do a home visit and to be able to partner with our counselors. And so the first step is always just trying to figure out, you know, what resources we have available first before we would go back and look for additional things.
I would say the same. I think our family advocates, our EEOCs, they do a fantastic job of supporting that work. And also our counselors, I mean, we just, we have great people working in our schools. We really do. And they are all about helping kids and making sure that kids get what they need. And so it doesn't, I mean, do we work long days? Yes, we work long days, right? But the work is really rewarding and the kids, when you see them showing up and you see the families so grateful that there are people and teachers and staff in our buildings that care about them and their families, that's huge, right? That's what we want. And we're seeing that, right? We're seeing the connections with our families and the connections between teachers and kids. And we feel supported by all of you and the resources that we have been given and the positions that have been created to help support the work are really working. So we just want to keep them, right? We want to keep it going and keep it consistent so that we can continue to do this fantastic work.
So I'm hearing a lot of mention of the family advocate. And how long have we have family advocates? So this. Okay, so this is kind of a year run of family advocates, first full year. Okay, and I'm hearing a lot positive from it. What are the EOC?
Yeah, so Educational Equity Outreach Coordinator, similar to a family advocate.
We had those before.
Yep, and so ours is bilingual and we share, we share, I think, all, our family advocate and our EOC.
And what is the function of the EOC?
Very similar, supporting families. So our EOC is bilingual, so he speaks Somali. So he does a lot of work with our Somali families and around attendance and around meeting with students, even having groups, doing lunches with groups of students and giving them that extra support that they might need.
And then you mentioned that, so something that I really appreciate is that you have, so you have this support, but you have the teachers making calls and mentioning that the teachers are the ones that have the main contact with them. And I have been a strong believer that, that we sometimes use support for, for supporting us too much and the stuff that, that get in the way of building relationships between the main person there, which is a teacher. So I appreciate that part. So is, in what ways the teacher is feeling supported or not having enough times, enough time for during the day to do those reach outs or not? Or is anything that you can add around that?
Yeah, it's a relatively new program. So we're listening to teachers. We added a bit of an FAQ page to the directions after the two weeks. I've gotten a few questions of how often should I call? What if there's just one tardy, the student hasn't been tardy all week, all year, should I call then? And trying to put in some thresholds in and some structure to their calls so that it isn't too much. I don't want my teachers, you know, spending two hours on the phone. They don't have time for that. But if they go into media and have a second near the media specialist's office and they have the printout already ready from the office that's been given to them. We made a video to kind of explain what all the attendance codes mean because we have a lot of attendance codes and none of them start with the letter of the word that they're actually describing. And so we tried to support them through that to be able to read it. And then, and then just a quick form to fill out on how did you find, what did you hear when you talked to the family? So then it can go to that group that has a little more flexibility in our schedules to dive deeper. But it is, it's a tier-one program and that's, tier-one is having all the teachers call, right? And that's our universal, everybody's gonna get that. And then when we find that we're having trouble doing that and the student's still struggling to get to school consistently, then we go up to that second tier where we've got that group of counselors, our advocates, our equity staff to be able to dig deeper and support. These are right, we can't, we couldn't hire enough EEOCs and family advocates to fix it unless we started with all and supporting all families.
Thank you, I appreciate that. So I am excited to hear about this and to hear the structure around it. Please keep note for next year when you do this presentation to see. Because it seems, it sounds like you're getting a kind of a baseline. And you did mention that in the, so what I see with this is, okay, you have an intervention and it's chaotic and it's, right now, it sounds like it's getting very exciting. It's a lot of work that people wants to do because you're seeing results. But after you're moving on with that, I think that what you want to see is that it start getting easy, easier, that people are responding, that then you will have only a few kids that you will have to contact, not the, whatever students you have because they are going to be more recurrent. So I'm looking forward to that time. And it sounds like what you're doing might not be too long to wait, which is exciting because I don't have to wait generations for this. So I'd like to see that next year, if I'm here next year, but to see this, this progression and in those measurements and those interventions, that's very exciting. And then. And then from then, then start seeing the relationship with things like this science out of the chart, improvements that we're seeing right now. So that sounds very good to have a chance to see the data in relationship with the interventions that are happening. So great job for that. One last thing that I cut from the video. So one of the kids in the video said that he has tried a lot of ethnic foods. What is an ethnic food?
Probably bring him in for his work. But I think what they were challenged to do was to write something that speaks to their identity and their work towards the Martin Luther King Jr. Celebration. And so as he wrote his poem, those are the words that he brought up. And Amos is just a wonderful little boy. I wish he was here, but his poem was so fun.
Thank you.
I just have a couple of things that I wanted to talk about a little bit. One of them is the jobs program, whoever, wherever that came from or whoever, whoever initially started it. It's brilliant. It's brilliant. It creates meaning and purpose and it does a whole lot of things. But I feel like it isn't just, you know, we heard a lot about the jobs and we heard about the kids and the pride they take in doing them and things such as that. But I also imagine those same kids, when they go home, they have jobs and they don't get the same, parents don't get the same reaction out of them. Can you go down and fold the laundry? Oh, mom, come on, I don't want to do that. And that, so what that tells me is that we're hearing about half of the story. And there has to be an effort put forth within the school by the staff and other students that creates an atmosphere of recognition, an atmosphere of reward, an atmosphere of accomplishment, feeling good about what you're doing and being recognized for it. And I didn't hear a lot about that side of it. And I'm wondering if you can tell me a little bit about what's going on there. Because it, I mean, really, I understand the program and I get it. And I get whoever came up with it is brilliant because it would work, but not without follow through. It wouldn't.
Yeah, I think we really do kind of pump it up in our morning announcements. So you saw already doing that job. That was the very first job we started with was morning announcements because they were literally begging me to get on those announcements. Like, they love to see themselves on the screen, their classmates. Like, if you go on a Google Meet, they can like hit like the celebration button or the love button. And so they wanted their classmates to be able to do that. So and like they just really wanted that. So that's where we started. And then it kind of expanded from there. And so that was like where we go. We, every morning, we're on there and we're saying, you know, the link for the job application is on CSO. You know, if you want a job, you got to sign up. And we had other kids talking about what their jobs were and what they liked about them. So we did a lot of prep that way. And then also, I mean, kids really love to feel like they are giving back. And our kids are no exception to that. Like, they really feel like they're making an impact at their school and that they have a voice. Because a lot of the jobs that are created were from them, like they wanted those jobs, right? So we asked kids, like, we have student council at Lincoln as well. And so student council would recommend specific jobs that they wanted. They would take feedback from their class and bring it to our student council meetings on Friday mornings. So we've added so many things based on what the kids, we had a student who created a job that he wanted. So he really wanted, he noticed that Mark was cleaning up the cafeteria after lunch and it was really bad after his lunch and he didn't want him to have to do it by himself. So he wrote a job description for what he wanted to do and he is now the cafeteria helper. And he helps every day and he loves it and he and Mark are best buds and it's great. So I think, I think that part is really, I think kids are intuitively wanting to give back. They really do. And they want to feel like they belong and that makes them feel that way. And so it isn't like, they don't get a lot. They get a lanyard that has, I had, actually Tammy's team created a wonderful graphics where each of the jobs are listed on the front. And then I bought lanyards that have Lincoln All Stars on the lanyard and they get to keep it, even if they are done with their job after a trimester, they keep the lanyard. They wear them everywhere. They wear them everywhere. They're so proud of having that job. So I can't, I don't know if there's other things that we did, but they really do love what they're doing and they have fun and they, this last one, we have employee of the week. So if they do really well, they can be nominated for employee of the week. And so we just started that. So that is, that's going to be fun to see how that takes off. And then, yeah, we're just keep like, like I said, we just keep like, what else could we do? What else could we do? Because they love it so much that it just makes us motivated, I think, to do more. Because it's like, okay, they really like this. Let's do, let's see what else we can add on to it. So, yeah, our kids are motivated. They love, they love it. They love, but they also are just really motivated overall. They want to do well. I mean, Natalie, you saw them. They're very, they're amazing. They're resilient and they are strong humans who have, a lot of them have endured a lot in their lives and they are just shining. So I'm very proud of them.
My second question would have to do with the turnover rates in your schools. How many kids are still there? How many kids that start the school year with you are still there at the end of the school year? And how many, how many students are new during the course of the school year? What percentages approximately?
Excellent question, and I don't have that answer.
My team just, we were just looking at our October, we went October 1 to last week, actually, just to kind of look to, actually, our ML teachers were interested in where that turnover was, where students were going. So we had 99, since October 1st, we had 99 students move out and we had 97 students move in. So enrollment's been consistent. We have 675 students. So, you know, I think you're looking at, what, about a sixth, less than a sixth turning over from October. September and August are a little hard just because there's so much change there. So we started there.
You said 97 since October.
Yeah, 99 out, 97 in.
That's a lot. I mean, that's a lot. And I would love to see this chart here, the MCA reading and math scores according to the line with students that have been with us for a full year. Because, because I know, I mean, when I look at this chart, it makes me, number one, it makes me kind of sad. Because don't, number one, don't tell me that income has nothing to do with student performance in the long, in the long term, because it does. It's directly related. You can see it on these charts. And secondly, it tells me a lot about communities. And if you, I mean, if you look at where the dots are on these, and I don't look at the, you know, I don't look at this as a school problem as much as, and I don't even look at it as a problem. It's an opportunity. But it, it's, the dots way down here at the end, we're in the 90th percentile of free and reduced lunch. We're as far over as we can possibly go for free and reduced lunch. And then we're above the line, so we're doing better than the average school that would be over in the 90th percentile. But when we have a school that's in the 90th percentile, that puts what, a percent proficient at around 20%. Then I say, okay, let's look at that long term. If 20% of your population is proficient in reading and math, what, what does the future of that community look like from a jobs perspective and an income perspective? I mean, it's kind of a self fulfilling prophecy. And if you go to the other end of this thing where you're up in, you know, the 0 to 10% economic or income range, you're up in the 80% proficiency. What is a community where 80% of the people are proficient and up to their grade level? And that would be adults. So you're talking up, you know, college degrees and higher. But it looks very good for those communities. And it, I don't see this as simply a school problem. I don't look at the school and say, well, teach those kids better. Because that isn't it. That's not the answer. And I do look, I wish this was hanging on the door of every, every office in City Hall. And I wish it was hanging on the office door of the Chamber of Commerce and all of those places. Because we need from our community leaders, I think, a much stronger effort to bring good employers into our community, less handshaking, less park tours, less things like that and more getting on the phone and calling employers and getting people to commit to bringing their businesses to St. Cloud so that we can start to raise the income levels of our population or our people that live in St. Cloud. And then when that happens, we're automatically going to see higher levels of performance out of the kids. It's a two-pronged approach. We also need to teach it well. But god dang it, we got to do something to, or we're stuck here, you know? We're not going to get out with 20% proficiency. We're not going, you're not going to see a community just explode and become a high income thriving community unless we can get those test scores up. But it's, it's working hand in hand and you can't put the cart before the horse. You just got to, I mean, it has to be done all together as a community effort, not just as a school's effort or just as a city effort. It's everyone working together. So I think this chart here tells a lot of stories. There's a lot of information on that.
I would say that we can teach them and we can do better and we are doing better. And we are seeing incredible growth from our kids despite not having, or maybe free and reduced lunch population, right? We still are seeing incredible, incredible growth.
I agree with you and it shows on this chart because you are above, you're above the line. You're doing better than what would be expected of a community in our shape. But there's also, you go back to that, the transient or the transciency, I don't know what the right word is there, of the, of the population. If you don't have the opportunity to teach that kid for a full year, you have a much more difficult time. And so if they come in and, if you've got kids coming in right now, you've only got a three-month window to teach them. You don't have the full nine months of the school year to teach those students. And they'll probably be moved on to somewhere else next year. So you have a real, real small window. So there's a lot of pieces that go into this. And they're not controllable by, by anyone really, but as a community, we can do better. I really believe that.
And I love your idea of the partnerships, you know, the, being in the room as we were first exploring the community schools idea and grants and seeing how many community partners showed up for that meeting and how many are ready to jump into the two schools we have that are joining that. I was very disappointed that I did not get it at my school, but happy that it's there and we can expand it. So I think it's programs like that. And I think you're right. It is kind of a whole community piece. And teachers are doing phenomenal jobs.
And our community should want to.
Butts off, you know, and I think, I think we're getting there. But people have to learn how it does work and how we all are interconnected.
Yep. And our community should want to because we certainly don't want to be in the 90th percentile for free and reduced lunch. That's not where we want to be. That's not a healthy place. So anyway, thank you. I appreciate what you're doing.
Well, you've got a lot of programs that I don't know very much about. So the kids' job thing, that's really brilliant. And you've explained that pretty good. Can you tell me a little bit, what is modern classroom?
So we have a lot of our teachers who are trained. It is an approach that is kind of, has a lot of different aspects to it. But what teachers do is they record lessons, so they record themselves. And then they post that on CSO, which is our learning platform. And the kids can watch that lesson with as many times as they want to. So if it's a math lesson, the teacher would post it, the students would watch. They would have some assignments that they needed to do based on that video. And then the teacher would check those to see if they have mastery of whatever concept was taught in the video. It isn't, and then the student moves on after they master that concept.
Are kids that young actually able to do that?
Oh, my goodness, yes. Yes, they sure can. And they love it, actually. They really do love it because, as you know, kids learn at different rates. And to be able to, I mean, I think about myself even, math was not my strength. And when, if I could have paused a teacher and said, can you please wait? I need to hear that one more time. That's what our kids are able to do. And that's pretty amazing for them. And they will re-watch and they can, they can go back. And if they have homework, they can watch it at home. So it's really, it's very cool.
Okay, sounds good. What is Promise Neighborhood?
Yeah, the two community partners we, or that I touched on mostly were Too Much Talent and Promise Neighborhood. So those are both just community organizations. The connections we have with them is that they both provide some after-school care for students. So we have a bus that comes and picks up kids to go to Promise Neighborhood. And then we also bust to, I'm sorry, to both, Too Much Talent and to Promise Neighborhood, where they pick them up. But they, but they run all kinds of other community programs outside of just supporting students. They support families and all kinds of other work. But those two partners are probably the closest that we've connected with at Talahe so far.
Are they related to Tricap?
Tricap? I don't believe so.
No.
I just took a tour of Tricap and one of the things that they had mentioned was the Angel Projects, where I think that they were involved with the Angels, you know? And how does that impact you?
The Community Angels, they're, it's an amazing, Erica Cole is the director of that program and she has a shop, actually, where our families can go and shop for brand-new clothes for their family. And she also, I think, has some hair care products and other things that they can, they can go and receive. And she just gets donations and grants and she's amazing, amazing. So, and we, like I said, have referred a couple of families so far and they are just thrilled. Because it's not, you know, it's not hand-me-down clothes. It's like they get to take the tags off and experience that shopping and choosing things for themselves, not something that's given to them, which is really empowering for families, too.
Okay. I know that Tricap has federal money. Maybe they're passing some of that down to the Angel Program. Letters, does that involve phonics also or tell me about it?
Yeah, it would be all five pillars of reading instruction, which would you call phonemic awareness? Can you hear the sounds? Phonics, being able to manipulate the sounds within words. Fluency, how quickly, smoothly you read. Comprehension, do you understand what you read? And the vocabulary, do you know all the words within reading? So what we're working for is, we're working through letters and it's eight different modules, eight units. We're moving into unit two right now with all our staff. We'll do three units next year and then finish off the year beyond that. And so that's been an incredible professional development for our, our community or for our staff. We, and for, yeah, the admin who get to sit in the meetings, too. So it's, yeah, it's very, it's phonics-based, but it's more than that, too. Then once students have those sounds, can they, can they read it quickly, smoothly, you know, well? And then do they understand what they're reading and can they also decipher those words as well?
Is that kind of coordinated with the recent state legislation?
Absolutely, yeah. So in the Read Act, all teachers have to be trained in some structured literacy or science of reading that you'll hear a program by 2027. And so Letters was one of the approved professional developments through the Department of Ed.
You mentioned you're running a dual language with Somali, kind of almost in passing. It sounds important. Tell me about it.
It is. It's very important. And it's been really interesting to see it just develop. So it's brand new. It's a pilot program. This was our first year. And so curriculum's been kind of an adjustment, trying to find curriculum that they can learn for half the day, their reading and their math in Somali, and then the other half following along in English with the rest of the class. And so that's been a lot of fun to go into that classroom and just see students learning. And it's, it's what has developed into a two-way immersion. So you've got different types of immersion programs where if it's like Clearview or, well, no, not even Clearview anymore. But some schools would just teach like a Spanish immersion class where you would only have But some schools would just teach like a Spanish immersion class where you would only have English speakers learning Spanish, right? Or if we had only English speakers learning Somali or Somali speakers learning English. What we have in our Somali immersion class is really fun because it's two-way immersion. We have some students who speak English at home and then some students who speak Somali at home. And so they both get that part of the day where everything does sound right. And then the other part of the day where they're learning and trying to decipher what's going on. The teachers have done an amazing job with a lot of visuals, you know, vocabulary work, bringing in actual objects to teach the vocabulary in English and in Somali. So it's a, it's a whole different way of teaching, but, you know, when, when you look at the research on language immersion, you really, you can't beat it. By the time they're, they're in high school, they're outperforming their peers by, by far. So it's, it's exciting to be kind of on the ground level of this and see where it goes.
We used to have a liaison program where a board member would be assigned to school. And we'd go in and ask, what do you need? And you'd come up with a whole list. And that isn't exactly what we're supposed to be doing. But I think both Monica and I have served as liaisons in both of your schools. You have a lot of needs, especially Lincoln. Like Al, I'm quite concerned about turnover. What's causing it and how can we slow it down?
I, I mean, we can only guess that you're talking the student turnover.
You do good on your staff. You only kids doing one.
We're doing good there. I think, I mean, we can't really predict what's going on in families' lives, right? And Al talked a little bit about poverty and about free and reduced lunch population. But families who, you know, live in that space sometimes have things that occur that force them to relocate. And so I think Al's right. The community, you know, raising wages and, and having jobs that pay livable wages for our families would really make a great impact in keeping their lives stable so that they can keep their kids' lives stable, right? I, I don't think there's one thing to blame or one, you know, we don't wanna point fingers on any one thing. But I think, you know, we hear from families all the time, like, I don't wanna leave, but I don't know what else I can do, right? And that's heart-wrenching for me to hear. And we do everything we can. Our Transitional Services Department here does everything that they can do to help support families and try to keep them stable. They do a wonderful job of supporting our families, but sometimes that's just not, it's not feasible for us to be able to keep them for many different reasons. So I think, I think it's a very complicated question that you ask and there probably isn't one right answer. But I think the more we can do to raise up our community, the more stability we will see in our schools.
I know that Tricap is involved with, with housing. Do you make any use of their services?
We do not, but I know that Transitional Services has lots of connections within the community that they utilize.
Thank you. You always have the good, good questions. Welcome back to your house. I just wanted to give a quick statistic just on the conversation. First, thank you both for all you do, creating a sense of belonging around culture in your community. And how do I get involved as a stakeholder, starting as a student, through a job recognition? This is our school. You heard it from your assistant principal in, in talking about that. And I feel that from you both. But we have this thing called the Opportunity Atlas. And the secondary folks have been working with Post-Secondary Education Strategy Institute. And it works through the Office of Higher Ed. And helping kids find, going back to what Board Member Doggrin said specifically around how do we get and move our kids, not just from the test scores, but you can't teach, we don't measure grit, resiliency, and all the things you just said. But I just wanted to, and I just asked the superintendent and she said, yes, thank you. Specifically around what we all need to know, all the way to City Hall, specifically in all what we do. The Opportunity Map Atlas, it identifies through our local central Minnesota area, St. Cloud and Wake Park. I put the zip code in and it gives poverty lies. The poverty lies on the, on the southeast side, where you have a food desert. Family income household at 35, a 35-year-old household, the average income is $11,000, right? So when we look at it, the incarceration rate is 30%. And so then you, you have it here when we start to look at less than 95% employment specifically around that, you see what we're faced with when Principal just talked about 99% of my students left and 97% came in around mobility. It starts with the poverty of it and you alluded to that. But I just wanted to show this statistics that we have it. Now the strategy is, how do you help kids find their interests? How do you get them vested in our school communities and bloom off their assets, which you're doing, and finding what they like, right? We know that. And then going into the pathways of through middle and all the way to high and we get to graduation. It's not just graduation. We're setting them up for life to change them economically. And I think we, thank you, board. You all have done a great job to fund and do all the things to do that, right? And so, but this is what we're faced. So I just wanted to just put that in the room around, here's the data that as all of us within our community and what we need to do to bloom our seeds of students that show up every day in our communities. Look at the attendance rate and why you call. Because that family said, thank you for calling me. I didn't even notice that you were, weren't here. Yes, we noticed and we, and a teacher called, right? And so it's just those things that, that we continue to do and you all give approval to do that, for our leaders to do that. So I just wanted to say that in, in this, here's, here's a picture. But we do have ways that we can change this, right? We identify it, put the strategy in place to do just what we're doing, because you just saw it right now with our youngest, that they're, they can bloom. That young lady, all of us, I cried too when I first saw it. I was like, wow, she's just so energetic. But we see it as you go to middle school and high school and they have talk shows and we, we see it. We, our kids that stay with us, oh, yeah, they, we had Three Star War, the winners. I talked about it last week, what's going on in state. Our kids are overcoming a lot of things and we don't talk about it enough. And then to see where you're starting from, right? So I just wanted to speak my truth, sorry. Thank you. Just in that, and, and then we, I was make sure that you have this and then we can just walk through it together. On how we change lives, though, we're really changing the economic situations of families once we find out. I was a poverty kid, food stamps. Somebody helped me. Somebody was there. That teacher called. They gave me other opportunities. I don't share my story enough. Gangs, drugs, all of it. I was south side of Chicago, go to my neighborhood every day and I see despair and hopelessness. But we, school gave me that opportunity to give back and do just what we're all doing to, because we love and know that's what's best for kids. So that just stood out to me and I had to just, just share that with, with, with us in that to see what our kids are faced with. Off the good work right here, right? This is, they, they brought great in what you're doing. So I just had, I had to say that.
Yeah, a little bit.
Before he starts, I'll, I'll just jump in because we're probably recorded. So I just wanted to make sure, 99 total students out of 675 and 97 total students out, so 14%. There would be kind of a shift if you're looking at that, no?
Oh, sure. Well, one, so this map that Jason put up there, you're gonna see it around. Some people are trying to make it a political talking point. And it's really sad. So if anybody dares point their fingers at you guys, I am more than excited to defend what you're doing, because I haven't been this hopeful about that neighborhood in a long time. It has its challenges. And someone asked about my homeless, so we, we have the Salvation Army over there. We have the Lincoln Center over there. And you guys are doing an extraordinary job. So keep doing what you're doing. It's working. I can't wait to share in what Jason pointed out. Like, we're doing, you guys are doing an amazing job helping that community, one, build community, maintain it and grow in healthy ways. So, thank you.
Yeah, yeah. I totally agree with, with Mr. Taral about it. I'll, I'll jump to, to the thing, too. But my question was to Jason, because you were showing the map. And can you tell us again in the map a little bit? I don't know if we, if we're getting too much out of topic, so you tell me it's your house. But I'm not sure that I know how to read that map. And since you show it, could you please?
Yes.
How, how is, how you should?
And so, yes, yes. And so that's why I was saying I will make sure you all get just your, this map. And so you see St. Cloud here. Here's St. Cloud. The red in the map is where your poverty lies within the map. And you see the southeast side of St. Cloud. And so when you look at it and you see the number, you can put it in all. I put it for your black families. You see up in the top, top right corner here, you have a box where you can, and my eyes are bad. Parent income, you can go high, all, high, middle, low. You can add child race, all, black, white, Hispanic, Asian. And then you go, can go into gender. And at the top, you see it where it says household income at 35. And it gives you a dropdown of just what all these things mean for us from teenage birth rate and incarceration rate, and it breaks it down. And so I put low income, black, gender all. And then let me go over this, household income. And then you see 11,000 is the household income from, for somebody that's 35 years old. You see the incarceration rate in that, that area is 30%. Teenage birth rate is not individual income. And then you just kind of see it, just, you put in and plug what you want from the, the bar on this side. And then it gives you from the bottom, and we can do it through our local area. And so one of the things where this was shared with us was, we were at the Post-Secondary Strategy Institute and they work on finding college or career pathways. And we were nationally with folks all across the country and they shared the map. And they talked about, here are the ways that you help the families overcome their socioeconomic status to really help them flourish and bloom by finding what they like, get their interests, give them opportunity and choice in what courses they take, help them build community. But they gave us the bigger picture and it was new to me because I hadn't, and I shared with the superintendent, I hadn't just did a deep dive on the income of St. Cloud in the surrounding areas. I never really did that. And this map just showed us, like, here's what we really face around living conditions and standards for our, for our, for our families. And then which ones. And so it broke it down. And then, so we now look at, and you all heard the presentation for us to look at what courses are offered, giving kids choice around robotics, coding, all the things that we talked about on how you give kids opportunity and choice. And then finding ways through internships and just all of it. And so they helped us kind of just start to put a map together on, you know, just a clear strategy, so.
So you just show that it's only for black kids?
Yep, yep. So let's just do your Hispanic families.
I think you don't need to do yet more.
No, just in that same area, right, where you have 16, was that 15,000? And then it just breaks it down again. And then you can do all. And then we can see the whole area where the, where the high-income families are in the area and to see, right? So these are your, these are your white families at 35. Compared to your, and so they showed us this and we all, our secondary team did just what you all did. Because we hadn't did a deep dive like that. And it's just like, okay, this is, we know that, you know, you know, we look at our data, but we didn't really know until we looked at how we really need to look at it to really change a, a family's situation, circumstance in their lives and education could do it, right? We know that. So, there it is.
All right, thank you.
I know, we gotta go.
We're breaking a record here for longest school presentation.
That's why I asked, that's why I asked the superintendent. I asked, because I knew if I gave that statistic, I knew it would spark it in. But I wanted us to, you all need to know what we're, we're trying to, what we're faced with and what we're doing. And you, you all have been here and, and what the approach is.
Scott, do you have anything that's essential here? Or we got a long night ahead of us.
Security. I have a constituent that recently pulled their child out of your schools and put them in the Stock Rapids because the child didn't feel safe. What are you doing for security?
So I would say that we follow our code of conduct. We work with our assistant superintendent and our superintendent to make sure that we are, if there are issues of safety, that we're addressing them swiftly. And we are doing everything that we can to provide that environment. But also, you know, following that code of conduct to make sure that consequences are given if there is a safety concern with a student. We also do a lot of creative things, I think, in terms of, at Lincoln, we have teacher-led recess. So areas of the building where, are a little less structured, we tend to provide more supervision and more support. And if, I, I don't have the numbers off the top of my head, but I'm sure Donna does. But our, our suspension rates have gone way down. Our discipline referrals have gone way down. We, we're making a lot of progress in that area. And I think we have a lot to be proud of and a lot to celebrate.
Thank you. I'll pass it on to Omar.
Okay, thank you guys very much for spending the late evening here with us. We appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, moving on to our other informational item for tonight. We have the Local Education and Activities Foundation LEAF report. Familiar faces here. We have our LEAF president, Diane Moller, as well as Executive Director, Bruce Henches. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. We're gonna dovetail right into that last topic, we believe. We're very proud of our year that we've had. And Bruce will actually talk about the 30 years we've had. But we do feel like we are the conduit for some private support of public education here in St. Cloud. And we feel we're doing a, a pretty good job of it. So some of you were at our annual meeting a few weeks ago and maybe some of this will be a little bit redundant for you. And we apologize for that, but we also want to just celebrate and let the whole board know as well as make it a little public for our community. So I'm gonna start by just talking about the annual awards that we give. And I'll just review those rather quickly. But the first award that we gave was the Phil Welter Volunteer Service Award. Phil was the gentleman who started the LEAF organization. We gave that award, the service award for, you know, volunteer involvement, to Ayan Omar and Jesus Sandoval for their participation in Dancing With Our Stars. That was a great gift to LEAF. They raised $55,000. And Ayan wanted that to be for our Activities Participation Fund, which means a lot of kids will have the opportunity to participate for a few years to come. That was a, a great gift. Our other volunteer service award went to Abby Piney on your staff, who takes care of all of our checks coming and going and adopt a classroom and, yeah, puts up with his communication. So anyway, she does a great job and so we gave her that award. The George and Shirley Torre Award for charitable giving. And I'm sure you all know who George and Shirley Torre are and, you know, did a nice job for, for LEAF as well. That was given to a business organization, the J. That was given to a business organization, the J. Weadum Foundation. Jay Portz is the president, and they annually give a fair amount of money to the LEAF organization. Jay is a tech graduate, and that's why that one was in there. The individual family donor for charitable giving went to David Kruger and obviously his late wife, Pat, who were very, very, very good donors for the LEAF organization. And then the fun one also, the District 742 Retired Educators Organization Club. What do we call them? A club?
Just educators, retired educators club.
That I'll talk about it later as well. But that fund really grew this year to over $100,000. And so we recognized that whole group of retired educators. The Instructional Excellence Award, we gave to the Vex Robotics Program and their advisors for all their increase in activities and doing a great job. Coaching Excellence, Linda Voight, who's been an athletic trainer at Apollo High School for a long time. And finally, our Lifetime Service Award went to a gentleman that many of you know, Bruce Mose, for his service to the LEAF organization. And so anyway, just a recap of our annual awards. And I'm going to let Bruce talk about the history a little bit of where we've come with our organization and our money. And I'm going to let him do a lot of that because, as many of you know, he is leaving the LEAF organization. He's retiring. And so this is his last chance to talk to you guys. So I'm going to let him do that.
Last hurrah. Well, thank you, Diane. You need to mention that. But anyway, our historically, we make this report to the board. We call it our year-end review and report to the community because we think it's important for the community to know what the education foundation for District 742 has been up to for the last year. And because it's our 30th year, we have a little bit more information that we're going to present about how we got to this point and why we have an education foundation. The first slide in this show is also on the annual report, which I hope all of you have received. And it's from our photo contest that we do through LEAF. But we think it is so, it's such a great picture of District 742 in a couple of ways. It shows the diversity of our district, certainly. But it also shows what you can accomplish when the focus is on excellence and not on differences. And what the tech team accomplished here, the title given to this picture was Pure Joy, following a winning goal in a big soccer game. And so we have included it as our annual report cover. Of course, the mission of LEAF is important. We are an independent 501(c)(3), whose purpose is to secure and channel private funds to support and enhance excellence and opportunity in a comprehensive District 742 public education program. And when we say educational program, we include all academic activities, arts, athletics, and student support services as needed to give kids those opportunities. There is a saying that talent is distributed pretty evenly among groups. Opportunity is not. And I think that's a little bit what you were just talking about. And one of the key roles of LEAF is to provide, to try to provide extra opportunities for kids so that all kids have the opportunity to display their talents. Because it was our 30th year, we do go just quickly through a little bit of history of LEAF. LEAF actually began in the 1980s. I'm sorry it didn't, but the cause of the LEAF establishment of LEAF began in the 80s when we started making cuts to the activities program. The elementary after-school program was cut in the mid 1980s, was eliminated. Activities fees began in the 1980s. There was an organization that was formed. It was called ECHO, Extracurricular Helping Organization, which was set up to try to address these problems. I don't know if anyone in here ever remembers hearing of ECHO. But it didn't last very long. And so it kind of died out. And so we get to the 1990s and cuts continue. In 1992, the St. Cloud Coaches Association goes to the Board of Education and says, hey, what are we going to do about all of the cuts to the District 742 activities program that are occurring? I happen to be president of the Coaches Association at the time. And I and Bill Ritchie, who was our vice president, were the ones who went. And that's how I kind of get connected ultimately with LEAF. Phil Welter was the board chair. Phil says, hey, let's get together and talk about this. And so there were a series of meetings that led to a steering committee. And that led to LEAF being formed in 1993. By the early 90s, there were local education foundations throughout Minnesota that were getting, or throughout the United States, that were getting started to support education in public school districts. And LEAF is a LAF. We are a local education foundation. But because the decision was made to focus solely on the extracurricular program at the beginning, we developed the acronym of LEAF, the Local Education Activities Foundation. That was our focus. We received $100,000 startup fund from the school district. It's invested at the community foundation. It has all been paid back, by the way, a long time ago. And then during the 1990s, growth of the organization was very slow. Our first grants were given in 1997. And it was given in two cycles of $4,000 each, one in the fall, one in the spring. So a total of $8,000 in 1997. We come then to the 2000s. In the early, in 2002, the middle school activities program was cut as part of a budget-saving proposal. We came to the district. I asked Kevin Janaszewski, how much would it cost to save the middle school activities program for a year? And he said $125,000. The LEAF board agreed that we would try to raise that $125,000. And during the winter of 2001 and 2002, we did a number of fundraisers, culminating with the first annual LEAF Night of the Stars held at the Civic Center on May 5, 2002. After that event, the St. Cloud Times called me and asked how we were doing on our fundraiser. I said, well, we're doing pretty good. But I didn't tell them how we were really actually doing. It wasn't so great. We were at about $60,000. George Torrey read the article in the paper that morning and called me at Tech and said, how close are we? I said, well, George, we need $65,000. He said, I'll be down this afternoon. And he came over to Tech, sat down, wrote out a $65,000 check. And we made our goal. Now, as it turned out, the Optimist Club came through with another $10,000. And there were some other donations that came in. But we raised $140,000. And it really established LEAF as a credible organization in support of the Student Activities Program in District 742. Then in 2007, to commemorate our 15th anniversary, which would occur in 2008, we made a decision to try to do a fundraising campaign. Laura Funnestein, Mike Faber from Viking Coke, and Wayne Schlechter became the chairs. And they were able to, with the help of the committee, create or gather $450,000 in five-year pledges. That is a key function, or a key date in the growth of LEAF also. And it provides us with the financial credibility to become a key player in support of educational programming. Then in 2008, Phil has his stroke. LEAF loses a great leader and the founder. It was at that time that I became the executive director. In 2009, a year later, after much encouragement from Joanne Dorser, a former board member that I'm sure most of you know, LEAF becomes a full-service education foundation by adding an academic fund. And so we had to change our official name. And we just changed it by adding an anthrazan. So we became the Local Education and Activities Foundation. And now we begin to grow rapidly. In 2011, we added the PAC RAT program. Kind of in line with what we're talking about tonight earlier is how do we support kids who don't have opportunities at home? If kids are reading by, at grade level, by grade three, they're probably going to be successful in school. PAC RAT is designed to do that. It's a preschool through grade three child literacy program. The Adopt a Classroom program starts in 2011. 2014, the Homeless Student Services Fund is established to provide crisis shelter, food, and clothing for kids facing homelessness. 2015, LEAF establishes an immersion fund in support of the Chinese and Spanish immersion programs. And then in 2018, the Activities Participation Fund, Diane mentioned. 2019, PAC CAT, a math literacy program, which is in our preschool programs and expanding into kindergarten programs. And in 2022, the Music Matters Program to support the music program in District 742. So that as of today, the endowed fund of LEAF stands at over $2.25 million. We have given over $2.9 million in grants as of December 31st. At the end of this month, we will make our first quarter report. And we have given over $100,000 in grants in the first quarter of this year. And so we've significantly passed the $3 million mark. Total of $263,897 in grants last year. So quick summary, $100,000 startup in '93, that's repaid. In fiscal year 1995, we raised $15,785. Fiscal year '23, we raised $326,000. On July 1, 1995, we had endowed fund grant, a total endowed fund of $115,000. We're now at $2,250,000. Our first grants given in '96, '97, $8,000. Last year's grants, $263,000. Prior to 2008, when we conducted our campaign, we had received no endowed gifts of over $5,000. Now we have 18 legacy funds of $25,000 or more, plus many gifts of over $10,000. Between '93 and 2008, we had one program, Student Activities. We now have Student Activities, Academic Fund, PAC RAT, PAC CAT, all of those that I already have mentioned, plus 18 legacy funds. The thing that I can tell you as executive director of LEAF that has been most motivating to me is to see the strong support there is in this community for this public school system. And I heard Heather say earlier, we have great teachers, great educators in District 742. I think that that is recognized. And along with that is great administration and that need the support. And they're able to do that through the education foundation. So what did we do last year? Well, we already mentioned the first one. And we mentioned Ayan and Omar's effort to raise that money for the Activities Participation Fund. Our Adopt a Classroom project set a new record, raising $51,350 so that we could adopt 205 classrooms with $250 classroom supply grants in District 742. And as you can see, since 2011, we've raised just about $350,000 for the Adopt a Classroom program. We have around 800 teachers, is that right? We.
It was about 850.
900 teachers? Okay, well, things keep changing. I probably should have just asked instead of even saying that. But so you're saying, well.
I was wondering, it'd be about 25% of them are getting a gift.
When, in August of each year, we survey all the teachers and say, hey, would you be interested in getting a Adopt a Classroom grant to purchase classroom supplies? So I can tell you that last year, we had 197 teachers who signed up for the program. Now, we made the equivalent of 205 grants. That doesn't mean that all 197 of those teachers who signed up got it because people can identify the classroom they want the grant to go to. And about half probably do that. The rest say draw from those that are, that have signed up for the program. So that's how that one is done. Our Homeless Student Services Fund, you know, 203,000 since we began that in 2015. And then Diane also mentioned our Retired Educators Fund as a retired educator of District 742. And so is Diane. I'm really proud of the fact that our retired educators continue to support education in our school district and their contributions now just for the endowed fund. This doesn't include PAC RAT and all of the other flow-through funds. But just for the endowed fund is over $100,000. And we recognized our retired educators at our annual event with a pin that says retired District 742 Retired Educators. And really appreciate what they've done. And again, I would lay claim to say that we have the largest retired educator fund in the state of Minnesota for our education foundation. So here's where we are as of the end of the year. $1,376,000 in our activities fund. We give out a 5% grant off of our endowed fund. So that means there will be $68,000 given to support the Student Activities Program in endowed fund grants. The academic fund is at $874,000. So there will be $43,726 in academic endowed fund grants. One of the things that makes me the most proud, though, is that of all of our grants, the endowed fund only makes up about a third of our grants. The rest are through the other programs that we've mentioned here. So for this year, for example, the $263,897, the grants above the line are from the endowed fund, are the endowed funds of LEAF. And it's about $100,000. And so the other ones below that are the program efforts, fundraising efforts that LEAF does in support of District 742 programming. And if we look at the total grants given since we began granting, it's about the same kind of a breakdown. The ones above the line are from the endowed funds. The ones below the line are from other program efforts. And you see there the Adopt a Classroom project, we kind of highlighted, this time with $342,000 given. We have hundreds of donors. And I note above there, we have one donor who every few months sends us $3. And that tells me this person is a real supporter of public education, but they are just not able to make the contribution that other people are capable of making. But it shows how important it is to that person. And all of our donors are important and have an impact. But we have some that make particularly large donations. And those people have, or those organizations have particularly large impact on the things that LEAF is able to do. And so you can see those that came in this year that were $5,000 or greater. And I don't want to put anybody on the spot here at the board in going through these. But but what a difference those make and allow LEAF to be the conduit in support of public education. We have 18 legacy funds. These are the funds, gifts of $25,000 or more, given over up to five years, can establish a legacy fund with a 5% grant given in the donor's name to the program of the donor's choice. This is the group that in 2008, we had none. We now have 18. And a couple more are on the way. And it's a way for people to, or organizations to impact particular programs. And you see up there what each of those legacy funds is focused on supporting. Just a couple other quick announcements because I know I don't want to take up too much of your time. We have a LEAF photo contest. And we would encourage anybody watching this organization, or this presentation, that all parents, all staff, all students are invited to submit pictures that they take that meet our photo contest objective of the best of 742. We're looking for pictures that we think display the great things that are going on in the district. One of my favorite, these, the three that we have on here are recent winners. One of my favorite is the upper right-hand one that you can see is from a couple of years ago during COVID, but from Pam Stang's kindergarten class at Westwood. Raise your hand if you're ready to learn. And you've got a classroom full of kindergarten students ready to learn. And and so they can check out the webpage, www.leaf742.org to find out how to go about submitting those pictures. But then we choose a winner at the end of June and at the end of December each year. The winner gets a gift card to either Shields or Target of their choice. And they get to identify a program. And LEAF gives a $500 grant to that program. Obviously, the one that was on our annual report went to the Tech Boys Soccer Team this past year. And this is just a little information about our endowed fund grants. We have two cycles. We just, the board of directors just act. We just, the Board of Directors just acted on our spring grants on Monday. That's why next week, we'll be coming out with a list of all of our grants so far this quarter. But staff are encouraged to apply for grants on the LEAF webpage. In May, the fall grants applications will be available, and we take those up through September, and then award grants again in October. And learn more at leaf742.org. That's it. Are there any questions, or...
Scott?
We had a presentation tonight on Somali immersion programs. Is that going to be added to your list?
I can tell you that it's come up as a topic, and depending upon how the program develops, I think that it's certainly a possibility. Generally, LEAF develops programs when people come to LEAF with an idea and funding that they would like to use to support those programs. So, we're certainly open to that, yes.
So we're gonna come up with some money.
Well, that's...
Yeah. The other thing, Night of the Stars, I mean, that's kind of your annual event, and it was in the brochure from the Paramount this year, and lo and behold, it didn't happen.
Yeah, and I probably should apologize directly to you, Scott, because I know that impacted you. But yeah, the Night of the Stars began in 2002. We ran it for 20 years. We missed because of COVID. But as we prepared for it this year, and just considering all of the circumstances of it, it is a very labor-intensive, time-intensive event. Last year, we were not able to get to Paramount, so we moved it to Tech. We were going to move back to the Paramount. Creates some more challenges, but after discussing it with the board, the LEAF board, the decision was made not to hold it this year. It may come back again next year. The Paramount was involved in that process and was aware of it, but apparently their brochure had been printed before the decision was made, although the decision was made by late October. And, but, so I understand that it was not correct in the Paramount brochure.
Will we be bringing it back at the Paramount or at Tech?
If it, if we're able to bring it back in the future, my guess would be it'd be at the Paramount. The kids really enjoy going downtown and performing on a big stage. Even though the Tech stage is beautiful and Apollo has a stage, it's, I think the kids and the directors have really indicated a desire to be on the downtown stage.
Of course, you gotta rent that stage.
The Night of the Stars has always been a very expensive program. And even when it was in a school, it was a very expensive program, because there's a lot of support that is needed in order to put on a show that is a great representation of the talent of our students and that is worthy of the community coming to support.
I had the opportunity to hear this twice, so thank you.
Yeah, sorry.
No, no, don't be sorry. I just want to say that every year when I come to the annual report, I'm like, "That's right, this is our community." Like, you know, sometimes it can be tough to sit on this side of the board, on that side of the table, on all sides of the table when it comes to the struggles of education. But when I go to your event, I know, I just see how many people, including our $3 friend, are really invested in us and our future and in our community, and it's a beautiful reality. So thanks for being part of that.
Bruce, I don't think we can let you step away just quite yet without saying, wow, you know, we do get a lot of great leaders here, and we're such a fortunate community, but how fortunate we have been, and this community has been, for once again, you sharing your passions and your talents, so...
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate it. It is a passion of mine, but I do have to be very, very honest and say, there are so many people that have been involved in this whole process with LEAF, beginning with Phil Welter and the board at that time, just so many people that have contributed, not to mention the donors, that it is very difficult for any one person to take credit for much of it, you know? But again, I think that it reflects well on the community, and it reflects well on the support the community has for public education, that we can always find a Board of Directors. We have a 23, 24-person Board of Directors who are willing to volunteer their time. The executive director is the only part-time paid position in the LEAF organization. And the, all of the board members, all of the committee work, all of the events are done with volunteer work. So it's a community-wide organization that it's so important for the community to stay involved and support our public schools. But thank you.
Yeah, how lucky we are, so... Appreciate it. Thank you, guys, for coming here tonight, too. Monica?
I just thought that we cannot let you go without asking for, I don't know, an ovation, an applause, or something for Bruce, because it's probably the last time that you're going to be at this table doing this report. Maybe?
We think so, yes.
We think so, so...
Closing in on the search process right now.
Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna make it fun, because this is, you're gonna do something for us, you're gonna sing or something, a poem.
You'd like me to sing?
Can everybody else be excused also?
My grandkids don't even appreciate my singing, so... My poetry maybe, but I don't have a good poem. I do know the Raven. I could recite the entire Raven. If you have another 15 minutes, I've got that...
We don't got that time tonight.
So Bruce, thank you so much for being here and for doing, for dedicating the part-time of your life, which is a part-time job, but the full life to do this and to do this work. And thank you so much for all that you have done and being here. And I hope that you have a lot of fun, just that you're not gonna have that part-time that is like a full-time life that you have done this time. So thank you so much.
Thank you. I often joke that when I was hired as the Executive Director back in 2008, they said it would be a halftime position. And there's 24 hours in the day, so halftime is 12 hours a day. I thought I could handle that. Thanks.
Oh, no.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to our discussion and action items tonight. First up is an action item. It is approval of the 2024-2025 School Calendar presented by Dr. Mike Rivard, Assistant Superintendent for Elementary Education.
Just need to rescind this.
Good evening, Chair Haas, Dr. Putnam, and members of the board. Glad to be back this week. I would like to, possible to get the screen going, is it possible? Could I have the screen?
Yep.
Yeah. Yeah, really? Sail on out here.
He's telling me it's currently in the news.
That is...
You really want to sail into retirement.
So last week, we did have a discussion and looking for approval for next year's school calendar. Our challenge was, is when we were looking at March, so I know that we went through each month last, last week, so I won't do that again, just for brevity of time. But where we were seeing a complication was on March 31st. And at that point in time where the confusion lied was in having that marked as spring break. Our number of days was accurate. However, if you look below the calendar, where it says 3/1, and next to that, before it said spring break, so we did have to change that to say no school, because our spring break is in April, on April 18th. So that's where the confusion lied last week. So besides that, if the board has any questions related to the 24-25 calendar, I'd be glad to try and answer, but besides that, the administration is looking for...
Al?
I would move approval of the 24-25 calendar as presented tonight.
Do I have a second? I have a motion by Al, a second by Natalie. Any further questions? Yes, go ahead, Zach.
Yeah, how can you call one day off spring break?
That's a great question, Mr. Dorholt, and I'll just leave it to your man.
I still think it's a little crazy to have the October 3rd instead of October 4th. I'm aware that it is a religious holiday in some faiths, but we don't really do religious holidays in the public schools.
Any other discussion?
I just want a clarification. This is not a religious holiday. We're not making a religious holiday in our calendar, in the school calendar. And I don't have more clarification about that, so that's my opinion.
Natalie?
If we will find our eyes going to December, we have winter break from the 23rd to the 31st. It's not a religious holiday, just like Thursday is not a religious holiday on our calendar. So when we, the reasons why they're off may vary, but the reality is that these are off because of decisions that were made to make our calendar match our diversity. So we would, I would not really think we would think about moving Christmas, or moving winter break away from Christmas. So we have to think about equity there. And that's, that's who we should be, and that's who we are.
There's one in April, too. I don't know if you mentioned that. And I would think we want to have school days where we're going to get the most people there. So if we have days that we think we're gonna lose a lot of attendance, then maybe we should look at that as we're developing our days. Monica?
Just a point of order, do we need to rescind the motion that we passed last week?
Can we just reword the motion?
I wasn't here last week, and so how did you leave it?
Yeah, let me reword the motion that I would like to move that we amend the calendar to the current calendar.
Loving it. Zach, can you call vote?
Al Dahlgren?
Yes.
Natalie Copeland?
Yes.
Scott and Grayson?
Yes.
Monica Segura-Swords?
Yes.
Shannon Haas?
Yes.
Zach Dorholt says yes.
All right, we are moving right along. Then we are, next up, an action item is setting the date for the District 742 retiree recognition presented by Tammy Deland, Director of Community Engagement and Communications.
Good evening. Yeah, and we are sailing into retirement. It is my privilege to announce tonight our annual celebration for our retirees, and we are going to be recognizing and thanking our dedicated employees on June 4th, which is a Tuesday this year, at Tech High School. We are gonna start the celebration with a social at 6:00 p.m., and the program will follow at 6:30. And we hope to see you all there.
Thank you. This is an action item.
I would move that we approve the District 742 retiree event as presented.
Okay, we have a motion by Al, a second by Monica. Any discussion? Great. Zach, can you call vote?
Shannon Haas?
Yes.
Monica Segura-Swords?
Yes.
Scott and Grayson?
Yes.
Natalie Copeland?
Yes.
Al Dahlgren?
Yes.
Zach Dorholt says yes.
Thanks, Tammy. Okay, then we're moving on to discussion item. Appoint board members to award diplomas at Apollo and Tech commencements. We are having graduation on Saturday, June 1st, Apollo at 11:00 a.m. and Tech at 3:30 p.m. I think last year, did we go with three board members per, just two? Okay. And so, goodness, Heather isn't here. Does, is Heather have a boy that's graduating, a son that's graduating? Do you know? Can we just include her in as a third for Tech?
Yeah.
Is that okay with everybody? And if she's not gonna be there, then we'll just go with two? Okay. Natalie, are you, I can hardly remember my kids' own ages. Where are you at with...
My second son is graduating from Apollo this year. Heyo!
Oh, my gosh, that's two. Going quick here. Okay, so I'm guessing you on Apollo.
No, I'll go to Tech.
Okay, so do we have one more for Apollo? Anybody? Does it matter? Scott? Okay. And then a couple people for Tech, and we'll save a spot for Heather as third if she wants that. It doesn't matter. To me, I can do backup plan, too.
Just put Heather in there.
Heather in there? Okay. Assuming that she'll be there.
If she doesn't want to, someone else can.
Right, okay. Okay.
I don't believe we vote on these here, so...
No. Okay, so do we have, is there anybody else want to do Tech then? Okay, so we'll do, for Tech, we'll do Heather and Zach, and for Apollo, we'll do Natalie and Scott, and then if you can't make it, certainly we'll step in and help out. All right, sounds good. All right, then moving on to our last discussion item, we have a second reading for Proposed Board Policy 503 presented by Dr. Mike Rivard, Assistant Superintendent of E12 Education Services.
Thank you. Good evening again. So we are in our second reading of Board Policy 503. I again won't read through the policy we did last week. We did have a recommendation from the school board to look at the use of the word "family/ caregiver" and substitution for parent or guardian throughout this policy. So I've made those substitutions throughout. No other recommendation from the board last week. So this would be our second reading and looking for a third reading at our upcoming board meeting. Are there any questions? I would be glad to review them as part of the entire policy.
Are we good on that? Well, this is impressive. We are just moving along. All right. So then we're moving on, so thank you. We're moving on to reports. First up, we have the Superintendent's Report. Our Superintendent, Dr. Lori Putnam.
Thank you, Chair Haas, members of the board, and listening public. Good evening. I have just three things I'd like to talk briefly about. The first, particularly for those listening at home, is that we are watching the weather closely. I remain hopeful that we will get through this entire year without having any weather-related school closures. But for preparedness sake, right, since we'll be prepared, so it won't happen, just reminding folks to please be listening for news in the evening. We do make any announcements prior to 9:00 p.m., and then prior to, so if you haven't heard from us by 9:00, then you won't, and then prior to 6:00 a.m. in the next morning. So we will, and of course, encourage everybody to stay safe with whatever weather moments may be coming. I was asked to provide a report on the civics and government conversation that was held at... to provide a report on the civics and government conversation that was held at the League of Women's Voters. Even a month or so ago, two of our government teachers went to the League of Women Voters at their request to talk about how current civics and government standards are implemented in our courses. And so, they talked about how the current standards are currently being taught. They gave some examples of some lessons and some assessments, and they had no conversation about any future changes or implementation because, of course, those decisions have not been made yet. And finally, I just want to give a shout-out, actually, to our, this team here sitting at the, at the table, and to the team over at the, on the side table there. As, and as you may have seen in the newspaper, there were, there have been reports, not only in our local news, but around the, around the state, about school districts and their budgets. And of the AMSD districts surveyed, only 12 were coming out budget-neutral or with, or any sort of, in the positive. And in our, in our area, we are, of course, pleased to be reporting in, in the black, I believe it is, right? That's the positive side, the black? Okay, just checking. I'll get that right. And I was asked by a reporter, you know, why, why do you believe that to be the case when other school districts around the state are struggling? And first and foremost, I said, this board has a commitment to fiscal conservatism, fiscal planning for the future, and transparency. And so, I am exceedingly grateful to this board for your commitment to keeping our district in good fiscal shape. And then, of course, to Amy and our entire team back there. Amy often has to say no to, to the things that we want. And that's not always an easy position to be in. But because of, of the commitment of this entire team, we are able to say that we are in good shape. And I would say that we have used our S R funds, the one-time funds, the COVID funds exceedingly carefully. We never use those for ongoing fiscal needs. We use them, if they, if we use them for positions, over the last three years, we found ways to put them into our, into sustainable funding so that we aren't making significant cuts at this point. We have been very cautious about planning for inflationary costs, particularly around curriculum needs. We know that after COVID, the online curriculum costs really soared. And so, there's been very careful planning to make sure that we're able to cover those costs and the costs of technology and technology safety, to make sure that we aren't having to pull out of a fund balance. And finally, that, again, to the commitment of this board, that in negotiations, we only negotiated with sustainable funds. We don't pay ongoing costs out of fund balance. And also to our unions and our negotiating teams, right, who really understood that and worked in collaboration with us to make sure we were able to have fair wages while also keeping the district in good financial stead. So, I'm really grateful for that. It's, as the data show, it's rare, and it's, it's pretty amazing. So, thank you.
Hi, Edmund.
Yes?
The real positive outcome of having a balanced budget going forward comes in just a few weeks here when we get to the period of the non-renewal of probationary teachers. If we had a deficit balance going forward, the numbers of that group, the non-renewal group, would have to grow. And in severe cases, it's not just the non-renewal of probationary teachers, but it's actually cutting teachers who have tenure and who have long-time positions within the district. And we don't have to do that. And so, our teachers can feel very secure that they have a job going forward, where in a lot of districts right now, teachers are scared. So, it's a real positive to be where we're at.
Thank you. Then we have the Board of Education Standing Committee reports. I believe we just have two tonight. Board Finance and Audit Committee Chair Al Dahlgren?
Yep. Finance Committee, we met last Friday at 1:00 in the afternoon. First item on the agenda was the Apollo Project bids change orders update. Amy explained that the bids for the Apollo, Apollo parking lot, the north parking lot near the activities entrance, came in under budget, which means that we may be able to resurface the bus chute area as well. But we won't know for sure until we get the complete pricing for the bus chute area. But we also want to ensure that this wouldn't be relocated, that this bus chute area wouldn't be relocated as part of a referendum. And so, the committee itself got into a discussion about whether we should even think about moving forward with that at this point in time. There's, there's some puddling problems in the bus chute. And if we do replace it, and it needs to be replaced, it's, the puddling problems are pretty big and severe. And so, it's gonna have to be done at some point, but we don't want to do it and then tear it out two years later if we do a referendum for Apollo so that we can move it somewhere else. So, we want to make sure that our plans are in place and that we're not doing things twice or paying for things twice to do them once. And then, there was also a large change order that we approved this evening for the Apollo LTFM project, project on the agenda, which had to do with flooring. The, the project bids, again, for flooring came in substantially under budget. And so, it opened up or freed up some money to upgrade the flooring for the project in a number of areas. And what it does is it moves us to a more durable flooring and easier to clean and maintain flooring. And so, the choice was to use the fact that we came in so far under budget to upgrade the flooring to the better flooring. And so, the Finance Committee said yes. We, we agreed with that, and I believe that was on our consent agenda. Then, the next subject that we talked about was a EMR training facility proposal. Lori reported that she would like to have a facility at Apollo for emergency medical response training that we could offer to our students as well as other community members. Cost of the project would be approximately $550,000 for renovations. This project could still be done this summer. We already have a teacher that would be qualified to teach the course. The training facility would be located at Apollo in the area that is currently used for the print shop, which is moving to the district office. This would be another branch of the health services training classes that we currently offer. There's a bill at the legislative level to provide partial funding for the renovation. And we're also working with Centricare on additional funding. Mayo Ambulance Services would provide us with ambulances for that. But it sounds like it's just a phenomenal opportunity for kids. They'd be able to get in there and actually earn a degree with a certification, which would allow them to step out of high school and immediately start working with ambulance crews or first responder crews. So, it's a, that's a great opportunity, and I think a great thing for us to move forward. And hopefully, it sounds like a really strong possibility that legislature is gonna come through with the funding so that we can do the remodeling and move forward on that. We then had a discussion about negotiations costing. We discussed the negotiations costing model and process, including how to present items that don't actually cost new money but have a benefit to employees, such as adding a vacation day for 12-month staff. Or if we add a holiday in, there's a cost to that holiday. The cost isn't in dollars paid out. The cost is in lost productivity for that day. But it should be reflected when, when we add, when we add another day off, it should be reflected as a, the cost of that benefit should be reflected on the costing model sheets. And so, any of those, those items that are budget-neutral but have a benefit really should be listed as a, as a item on the costing sheets with a dollar amount attached to it so we can see exactly, and see and understand exactly what, what the contracts include. Amy is gonna inquire as to what models other districts use and how they account for items that don't actually result in new spending, as well as how to better reflect one-time money in the costing model. This information is gonna come back to the Finance Committee at a later date. Finance Committee Community Liaison Carl Kane is no longer available to serve on the committee. The committee discussed the method of finding an alternate to serve, and we'll revisit this at a future meeting. That was it at our Finance Committee meeting.
Thank you. And then Personnel Negotiations Committee Chair Monica Seggera-Swartz.
Hello, everybody. So, we had a meeting yesterday, March 19, with persons in the meeting. It was me, Natalie Copeland, Shannon Haas, Superintendent Putnam, Tracy Paul. So, we mainly, our main topic of discussion was the superintendent evaluation that we have engaged a firm, a consultant firm, that with Susan Bratt was a part of the firm that is called Cessna, a consulting group, was at our meeting. And we were looking at a plan survey of district leaders. So, we'll have cabinet, the school principals, directors, a CCA president as part of the superintendent evaluation plan for this year. The superintendent, the, the survey actually was based in MSBA rubric that we have used in the past, and we have shared that. We will be sharing the, the survey that we're going to have with the board. And I am asking you all to please get it back to me by next Monday. We are getting it, so I think that Tracy is going to send it to the board when we get it from the consultant. And so, please, if you have a chance to look at it this, from today to, to next Monday, just send it back to me with any comment that you have about it. So, as I said, that survey is gonna go to the leadership team that I already mentioned. I also sent a copy of these notes for all you two halves, if you have any questions or any details about the, the process that you want to see here. In those notes, you're going, you're going to find a proposal scheduled for this process that I'm going to say to you really quick because it's in the notes that you just got. So, just for transparency from, for the people listening. So, March 15, all board members will have the opportunity to review and offer suggestions, what I just said. 27, Board Personal Committee will receive online version of the survey. April 1, Personal Committee provides feedback, online survey. April 2, 10, Identify Personal Complete the 36 survey. April 11 and 12, Analyze Survey and Teams and Results. April 12, Send Draft Survey Report to Personal Committee. 16 will be a School Board Meeting Committee to review the survey summary and identify key staff and community partners to be interviewed and questions to be asked. We'll get comments back to Susan, which is our consultant. April 7 and 30, Conduct Analyze Interviews with Identify Staff and Partners, Identify Key Themes. May 1 and 9, Compile Survey Results and Interview Insights into Executive Summary. That's, that's a time for the consultants. They are going to be doing that, not us. So, we're not going to get the data from the survey. They are going to get data from the survey. So, this year is going to be completely confidential. And everybody that fills out the survey, every one of you that fills out the survey are going to be assured that we are not going to see who did, who said what. But we will get the summary for everything. So, May 14, Discussion of the Drafts of Executive Summary Report, School Board Personal Committee. Then, class session will be scheduled between the two board meetings in June with a public report in June 19 board meeting. So, to be determined, we adjust reports as needed per Personal Committee insights and share with full board. Class session is scheduled between June 5 and June 19 board meetings, June 19, Public Report of Evaluation Summary at board meeting. So, just as a reminder of this process, what we established, we talked about this last year. So, we have defined three-year part, three-year part evaluation, which is in, in congruence with the three-year contract that we have for the superintendent. So, first year was board feedback. That's what we did last year. This year, we have this 360 feedback, a leadership survey, and then we'll have student and committee feedback next year. We still figure out how are we going to do that part for next year, but that's how we have to find the process. I just wanted to offer a reminder that this year, after this process of evaluation, the superintendent, we come to the time limit that we have established, established by contract to tell the superintendent if we'd like to renew that contract or not, and that will be coming at the end of this year. So, that's it for my report.
Okay. Thank you. Did I miss anybody? Okay. Then, we have future agenda items. April Board Meeting and Work Session Topics will include the 2024-25 Compensatory Revenue Plan, the 2024-25 FTE Projections Based on Enrollment and Registration, Activities Update, Schools Update, Policy Readings. At this time, does any board member want to suggest a future agenda item? Okay, so, looking for a motion to adjourn tonight's Board of Education meeting.
So, move.
I have a motion by Monica, a second by Scott. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right, meeting is adjourned, 8:57 PM. Have a good day. Thanks for watching.